Let's call this meeting open at 8:00 PM. Adoption of the agenda, please. Mr. Lalonde. Councilor Lalonde. I move that the agenda be adopted as presented. All right. Well, well. All right. Seconded by Councilor Bellenguet. Any changes? Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to propose changes to item 5.1. I'm asking notably that it be withdrawn.
Oh, you're alluding to the petition?
Yes, the petition. Or just table it, rather. Fine. Well, we can't withdraw it from the agenda, but when you get to that item, you can withdraw that. Fine. But does she have a way with words, doesn't she? My... I hadn't called her my dear yet, and she's being nasty with me right from the get-go. What can I say? All right. All right. Any other changes, folks? All those in favor, then? Carried. Declarations of pecuniary interests? None? That's fine. Thank you. No delegations or presentations? Petitions and correspondence? Well, there's a letter dated May 9, 2017, from Mr. François Faucon, requesting to rename the Clarence Creek Arena. I would request that this particular petition be tabled until the next meeting for further consideration. Thank you. Let's go on now to item 6.1. Notice of motion, resolution presented by Councilor Mario Zant and seconded by Councilor Carl Grimaud in regards to the temporary structure by law. Beat resolved that council... Well, whereas a resident has approached his ward councilor with a request for an exemption from the provisions of bylaw 2009-138 as amended in order to erect a two-vehicle temporary structure. Beat resolved that council hereby mandates staff to prepare a bylaw to amend bylaw 2009-138 in order to allow for wider temporary structures that will accommodate two vehicles. Seconded? Yes, already seconded by Councilor Grimaud. Any questions? Fine. All those in favor, then? Fine. So... This will be dealt with at the next regular meeting of council? That's right. Well, I have to, much like my fellow councilor Lalonde, go softly with our clerk tonight. Let's go on with the next resolution, presented by Councilor Jean-Marc Lalonde and seconded by Councilor Charles Bellenguet. Beat resolved that council mandates the administration to prepare a bylaw to amend the traffic and parking bylaw in order to allow parking on both sides of Heritage Boulevard from Sylvain and Raymond Streets to Saint-Jacques Street. So, seconded, of course, by Councilor Bellenguet, and that's with regards to parking bylaw. Questions? Councilor Lalonde?
Well, at present, we were asked, Mr. Mayor, to identify certain roads and that need attention. And I would like us to await results of this study before going ahead with anything. I don't like to go piecemeal with that. Well, thank you, Councilor Lalonde, for having raised this issue. Let me tell you that I've asked for this about a year ago, over a year ago. And I do recall, having set foot in the clerk's office then, the clerk had occasion to phone the Infrastructure Services Department to ensure that this be inserted in a bylaw or a resolution. And we've been waiting for the past year that action be taken on this. People are wondering what's going on. They've gotten tickets on Heritage Street. It's a four-laner. And traffic flow is very low. I don't see why we would allow parking in this area. Well, I'm not against this idea, Councilor Lalonde. I would not like to go about this piecemeal. Neither do I. I would just like to have on hand all of the bylaw completely fine-tuned. Well, we've been waiting for this for the past year. I'd like to add on to what Councilor Lalonde has stated. I know what my colleague means by going by... in a piecemeal fashion. Well, let's... If we take a look back at the history behind this, we had Mr. Darsh come in a bit later. He was hired. We had to give him the time to do the work he needed. Mr. Carré then got hired. We said that we had to give Mr. Carré time, and Mr. Darsh came back again and got involved in this matter. Let me tell you this now. The way in which we're going about this, and we're waiting upon results with regards to a study we commissioned with regards to signage as well as parking venues, we're still waiting for results of all of these studies we've commissioned. I have nothing against the department people. It's... But this, in this particular instance, we're talking about a four-laner that goes right onto Laurier and onto a swampy area. We have to start off somewhere, Mr. Lalonde. We have nothing done, and we have residents waiting for results. You know, Mr. Mayor, when I brought this for further discussion the last time around, you'd asked for 15-minute parking provision on Edward Street. And the answer that was given to me is that this needed to be taken care of by the bylaw enforcement department and not the infrastructure department. And then I was told, wait, wait. The bylaw is forthcoming. Well, it's forthcoming. It's been forthcoming for the past year. Well, I believe they will bring it back at the next meeting, and then we'll decide upon it then. Well, can we have any comments on this particular department? Well, Councilor Lalonde has asked that this be dealt with at the next regular meeting of council and that we vote on this. It's not a major issue with regards to procedures. Well, Mr. Mayor, did someone ever start working on this? Do we have about 50% or 75% of this study already done? Well, from what I understood is that councilors or council would have asked me to take a look at those areas that were subject to resolutions or modifications. And I don't believe that we've received any comments on behalf of individual councilors with regard to this. Well, would it be a major headache that we go ahead with this, sir? You know, just to ask for parking to be allowed on the side of the road? Would it be a big problem to add this on right away on the documents that we have before us? Well, I don't think it's a major problem, Mr. Mayor. However, well, I think it might be advisable to wait that we vote upon a general bylaw. Well, how long are we called upon to wait for this? Well, we tabled this for a period of two months with you. I think that we've identified all the areas that needed to be tended to, and Mr. Darsh had prepared a report to us, and he stated that he was only going to add on to the pre-existing report those identified areas that have been identified in each individual wards or sectors. And that's what we're waiting, is your feedback. Mrs. Collier? In reality, we probably wouldn't have the bylaw back to you prior to January, you know, to make the exception to Councilor Lalonde. Well, we did this in the past with exception to parking. So, we'll bring it back at the next meeting. Just a tiny comment there. I know that this is a school zone. I know this. And we just have to make sure from a bylaw standpoint, if we allow parking in a school zone along the roadway as we're proposing to do. Thank you. That's fine. Let's go on to question period now. Especially, you have no questions yet? No? No? None? Fine. Let's go on to the United Counties of Prescott Russell report. Well, look. We stated that we were to give them a month. We were to have an answer with regards to ambulances given to us this year. If we were not to have an answer from them, then we'd go ahead. It seems as if they haven't given us an answer. They're still hesitating. And I also asked for a management study with regard to the Prescott Russell residents. And that's going to be forwarded to us at the next committee of the hall meeting. I believe that $5 million or $6 million worth of deficit when operating a residence of that particular nature is way too much. After entering into consultation with other local residences in this area, local retirement homes, that was way too much. And I asked them if they were ready to enter into a feasibility study. Look, don't forget that we paid 28% of this $5 to $6 million shortfall. We, in Rockland, have no residents living there, by the way, in Hawksbury, at that... Well, at that retirement home. Mr. Mayor? I had occasion to speak to Councilor Bellenguet concerning this now. Since they laid down the new asphalt on the old Highway 17 from the entrance right up to the crossways, cars are traveling by there very quickly. Now, they told me that they put up a 50-kilometer-an-hour speed limit around Clarence or it was painted on the paved area. Could we ask the United Counties of Prescott Russell to do the same thing and paint the 50-kilometer-an-hour limit on that road? Yes? Well, I'm asking from Tucker up to 174 on Tucker Street to have the speed limit reduced there. And this is going to be forwarded to the United Counties of Prescott Russell. There are three streets that empty onto Laundry Street in that area. And hopefully, next month, things should be moving, should get moving. Let's go on to the committee reports. Item 9.1. Financial operating budget status for the period ending August 31, 2017. Councilor Levaire? Are you sure that you want me to read this? That the financial operating budget status for the period ending August 31, 2007 be received for information purposes? Fine. Seconded by Councilor Grimaud. Any questions? All those in favor, then? Item 9.2. The 2016 Monitoring Program Annual Report, BioSolid Storage Lagoons. Councilor Lalonde, André? That the 2016 Monitoring Program Annual Report, BioSolid Storage Lagoons, be received for information purposes? Seconded by Councilor Bellenguet. Any questions? Councilor Lalonde?
Imagine I should ask you that question. I believe that your report states that you need to bore additional test wells. There's this snow dump that we try to... to implement in that area. Well, we're in the process of evaluating all of this, and we want to make sure that all of this will be... will be in operation. All of this will be in operation very soon. Well, this one here, this particular resolution deals with the lagoon, though. Yes? Yes, Mr. Mayor? We're also fine-tuning the regulations that will direct our behavior with regards to locations... Oh, I'm sorry. I should have stated this in English. Yeah. Jean-Marc and I, we're okay. We can hear you. It's just the older guys. Look. But we need an engineer to get involved in all of this, to explain to us what's in all of this. Because we're asked to take a look at the technical brick. I can make out the page numbers, but I can't make heads or tails of the contents. Fine. All those in favor? Carried, then. Item 9.3. Clarence-Rockland Fire Prevention and Public Education Policy. Councilor Grimaud? The Committee of the Hall recommends that town council approve the Clarence-Rockland Fire Provincial and Public Education Policy as an established service offered by the Clarence-Rockland Fire Prevention and that we mandate administration to include public education policies and revise and thus bring necessary revisions to fire prevention bylaws. Mr. Wilson? I know that the Fire Master Plan, I know you told us that we were... we had a bit of a delay with regards to the implementation of this now. Because I understand the strategy you're trying to implement here. Given the level of danger, you'll be performing more visits. I understand that. But are you able to say if, within the next year, you'll have been able to visit all of the commercial buildings, the schools, all of these venues that are at risk? I know that it's longer to perform home-to-home visits, but are you going to start implementing a blitz to ensure at least that everyone has been consulted or seen within the next 10 to 18 months and then implement your strategy? Is that what your idea behind all of this is? Or just to adopt what is before us to catch up? Well, really, our hope is to start this next year in discussion with our chief. I don't perceive any issues with the frequency of inspections or inspection programs. I believe that division of the department will figure out how best to manage that, understanding that we have some higher-risk assemblies and assembly occupancies as well as some lower risks coupled with some pretty aggressive programs with regards to mobile alarm campaigns or fire alarm campaigns that we'll be conducting next year. Sir? I'm in agreement with nearly everything that's contained in the report with regard to the information, concerning the information that's included in the plan. But... But the major cost of investments... Well, what you're alluding to is in the next resolution. Item 9.4. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I won't say you've jumped the shark, but you've jumped the ship. Well, do you know if in the past residential areas were visited once every year or once every three years? It was done at one time. You have no records of that? Well, we do have records of that, but we've never had a plan in place sort of, you know, compelling us to target these streets or this neighborhood. We've knocked on as many doors as we can, and whatever we've gotten done, we've gotten done. Some of that information was in our master fire plan. I'd like to think that we're trying to push the public to replace their smoke alarms every 10 years as per manufacturer's instructions. We have approximately 10,000 homes in our municipality, and it's my goal to hit 10,000 goals. In theory, we'll be back into each of those homes and keep reminding residents to change their smoke alarms. But that's our goal. But to answer your question, we've never had that structured program. It's sort of like we'll target this neighborhood this year and that neighborhood next year. There were park cuts, maybe, that were missed or large areas in the city that were never visited. Was it our... Within the parameters of the duties of our two full-time firefighters to do this? No? Who was responsible to do this? Well, look. We have fire prevention captains in each station, and they'll look into this... They'll look into this. But there's never a program that says, you know, this is how many homes we'd like to visit. What do we do? What will we do to do this? So, it's from a year to year, from a statistical standpoint, we've seen the decline of number of homes that were visited. We should be pushing that it be increased. A thousand homes is very assertive. It's an aggressive number. And it breaks down into a manageable number for firefighters, but it's still a lot of homes. Councilor Grimaud? Well, I think that this is a huge step forward, Mr. Mayor, because as we discovered in the Fire Master Plan, it wasn't clear as far as what our city was doing. And I think it's... You know, I say it's a big bite as compared to what we were doing, but I think it's a big step in the right direction for prevention for our city. So, in my opinion, it's a challenge. It's a challenge, of course, but we'll see. We'll see. But it's a good step forward. At least we have something. Other questions? All those in favor, then? Carried. Thank you. Let's go on now to next resolution. Clarence-Rockland Fire Department Water Rescue and Ice Rescue Service Level. Councilor Bellenguet? Committee of the Hall recommends that council approve the Clarence-Rockland Fire Department Water Rescue and Ice Rescue Service Level. Item 9.4. You're overlapping onto another resolution here. I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I'm a bit off tonight. That's okay. Committee of the Hall recommends to council that Clarence-Rockland Fire Department Water Rescue and Ice Rescue Service Level Rescue on calm water as well as on ice. And that the town council recommends that these services be identified on divisions shared by or promoted by municipal bylaws that are to be fine-tuned for final approval at the next town council meeting. Any questions? Councilor Bellenguet? Well, all right, then. As I stated, Mr. Mayor, I'm certainly in agreement with the training regards to ice rescue and to have the proper equipment to allow us to do so. But I believe so. Even though we do have a backhoe, we have a used backhoe. Or should I say a boat? A boat to be used for that purpose. Do we need to invest in a new boat? That's what I'm wondering. Firefighters, both on a full-time or on a part-time basis, are those that need to come back to us with regards to that. And then... So... I don't... I personally don't see the use at present to purchase a new boat. Well, you say that you're in agreement. You're in agreement with it. But you don't want any equipment. You're in agreement to offer rescue services, but you don't want them to be properly equipped. Well, I agree that the firefighters need training. And most of the time, they'll get involved in ice rescue. On the Utawa River, if someone disappears, for example, and I believe that there are search and rescue services already in place, if I'm not mistaken. But what I'm saying, what I'm getting at is that because no one has been earmarked for that particular service on a full-time basis. What I'm saying is that the response time might not be all that conducive at all types of events. So, if we have a full-time rescue agent... Well, I think that we're at a point where we should... We're wondering whether we should continue on with this service or not. Have you got something there? Well, what's your question? What do you want cleared up here? Well, I'm asking, what's the point of investing into a new boat? If no one on a full-time basis will be operating this boat? Because we're calling a lot of volunteers to do this. By the time they're called out, they have to go get the boat out of the dock, put the boat into the water. I don't see how that's going to help anything. Emergency-wise, I agree with helping out. We can always find citizens that will offer their boats to go and search for victims and such. But to invest in equipment, really, that... Why invest in equipment? I mean, if we need a fire truck, that's fine. But why invest in a rescue boat if nobody's there to maintain the boat on a full-time basis? Well, they are called out to offer those services at times. Well, Mr. Mayor, if I can, to the councilor's question, this is not an uncommon level of service. The city of Ottawa doesn't leave boats in the water or trailer. They respond with those boats in times of need. In the recent storm, they came to Ottawa. They had four simultaneous river rescue calls at the same time. Could that happen in Clarence and Rockland? Yes. The risk is there. How likely is that? Well, I don't think that the risk is likely. Historically, of course, we go up two or three times a year in that boat for calls either to search for someone or to assist another service like the OPP or whatever the case may be. But the challenge that I have is that we are a municipality that lives along a river. We promote our riverfront activities. We operate a boat launch. We have a number of riverfront parks. We celebrate the river every year with the River Festival. I think that we should take it upon ourselves to find a way to protect our residents and visitors to our municipality that are participating in our activities. So, I think it is a valid point. Like many other centers, of course, we have firefighters that respond from the center, take the boat and launch it during the day. We have a full-time staff that increases response time to get the boat into the water. But it takes some time to get that boat into the water and launch it wherever it has to go. At the end of the day, I guess, if I may, Mr. Mayor, really what I need from council is you guys to determine the level of servicing that you want from our department to move forward. And that's why this is intended to provoke this discussion amongst council. We need a discussion, a decision from you. We wonder whether you want us to replace this equipment or not. The challenge is, if you want us out of that business, we need to provide a viable option. Because if we send firefighters to the river edge, they're going to put themselves in harm's way. And that's the problem for individual firefighters or any emergency services for that matter. Councilor Grimaud? Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe he's addressing the right question. Where do we want to go? And that's our responsibility. I can echo what he's saying. I think that if we decide to stay, let's say, in ice rescue, it's a lot of training. It's a big investment for our city. Let's try to be... If somebody goes under in the wintertime, our river has a lot of current. And I agree with Mr. Bellenguet, the time that it takes to deploy. By that time, if there... Likely, there's not a big chance to recover a lively person if there's a recovery effort that's being deployed. So, I believe, based on the statistics he's saying three times a year, I believe, like Mr. Wilson is saying, that we need something. It's how high do we want to go? We do have a river. I believe his comments are very important to remember. Do we need a $45,000 boat? I agree with Mr. Bellenguet, then. But we need to decide as a council what we want. And based on that, I believe, from talking with Mr. Wilson, they'll bring us various options with various costs. My question is, do we want to stay in ice rescue? Do we want to get involved in that? Because there's a lot of training to be qualified as ice rescuers. It's up to council, and there's a dollar amount to that. My opinion is that... I know that it's higher risk, but it's very low frequency. That's where we need to manage it,
That's where we need to manage it, where we want to go along, whether we want to go along with this or not. Councillor LaLonde.
Sir, our river, the river is not our responsibility, it is the OPP's responsibility. Going back a few years ago, and I looked for it last Friday, the OPP had a boat. It was stored in the Laroes Forest, and last Friday, the boat was not there anymore. I don't know where they are storing it. It's at the station, I believe I've seen it in the station. Well, I don't know where it is. Well, it should be parked at the river. Well, one of the things, at that time, it would be a lot cheaper if we could make arrangements with a local boat business in Rockland. That's what they did in, at one time in Hogsbury. Anchor, yeah, the Anchor Marina, that's what they did there in Hogsbury. Forlorn now, they went to Hogsbury. Now, I'm only going back a year or two. And the OPP had one boat to serve Prescott Russell as a whole, and the boat, I think, like he says, it wasn't used at all. I think that the boat would have sank if they would have put it in the water. Well, I did have a conversation with our detachment, detachment, the commander, they assured me that they have a boat, but the reality is, the eastern region boat would come out from eastern region, so Kingston. There is a boat in Hogsbury, but not in the water, and that's beside the Hogsbury detachment. So if we want something for, from eastern region, it would come out of Kingston. He says that the reality is that they don't have a boat in our municipality that we could respond in a timely manner with regard to a water-related incident. They partnered with us in the past, because we have a boat that we can launch in relative short order. So the OPP, take for example, the gentleman that came off from the ferry and took somebody else's boat by the ferry terminal. You know, the OPP requested the fire department to launch our boat to look for the victim that presumably had gone missing from that boat. So the reality is, yes, the OPP does have a boat, but the time to get it into the water from Rockland would be substantial. Well, should we not ask the OPP to get themselves a boat? Or to kick in, to help kick in if we're going to be buying a new boat, if they're going to be using it? It's their responsibility to look after the river. What, maybe send a letter and ask them, ask them to have one on standby? Well, Mr. Mayor, the last conversation that I had with the acting inspector is that they had no trained operators here. They need to bring trained operators and a boat from Kingston. I'm not saying that none of that is achievable, it's all possible, it's just a matter of try to follow along with council's wishes. Alfred and Plantagenet just bought the boat for their fire department. Well, André? Yes, Mr. Mayor? I think that we're already asking our part-time volunteer firefighters, a lot of hours of training already. Fire suppression and prevention and extraction and all of those sorts of things. I think that we could, to address Mr. Grimal's point, we could probably settle the minimum, which was shoreline rescues. I'm not sure of the actual term to be used here, but I think that for the frequency, two or three a year max, well, I don't think it's appropriate for us at this point. If something, it's something that we could review in five, 10 years from now, and then address it then, depending on where we stand. But to me, right now, I'm not willing. I'm not on board with purchasing a boat with that type, with that, the type, with those types of conditions. Well, councillor Zant?
Well, we're all over the map as to where the boat is and who's responsible for it. At the end of the day, if we were to build a gigantic cement plant, they would be required to do, to obtain training to do rescue in a cement plant. But at the end of the day, if one of our members, a member of our family or kids gets stranded on the river, what can we tell them? Well, I'm sorry, we chose not to do anything with regard to river rescue. Oh, we're never going to say that, of course, but we have to give the tools to be able to do the job, because we have a right. That's just the way it is. We're never going to move, we have to deal with it. So I do agree, I do agree with having the proper tools and the training. I agree with that. Having said that, yeah, it's a little pricey for a boat, but we have to do something. We just can't sit there and say, well, it's not just the kind of emergency services that we'd like to, you know, delve into today. You see, it's easier for bigger municipalities, for Ottawa and Gatineau, because they have full-time firefighting and full-time everything. Yeah, I know, but we need partnership with the OPP, you know, first come, first served. Either way, we have to do something. You know, we'll supply the boat if you supply the manpower, there's an agreement that can be had, but we just can't say, we're not going to go into this kind of emergency rescue because we don't like the price of a boat. But, but look, to me, it's not, Mr. Wilson? I'm sorry? It's not just the price, but training. Well, Mr. Wilson, one thing I'd like to point out to council is that the volunteer fire station is sometimes a strange beast, because there's an unusual attachment to the water rescue program that comes out of our Rockland station. They take a huge amount of pride in what they do in providing the ice-water rescue that they do today. And one of the big, real big challenges awaiting us, and you can look across the province, is downgrading the level of service that we provide today and say, well, we used to be able to go onto the ice yesterday, but tomorrow you can't. That's going to be very difficult. The public will always call 911, and once they call 911, they expect someone to come to their rescue. If it's a vehicle through the ice, someone through the ice, trouble on an island, floodwaters, we had crews on standby during the floods, with our inflatable boat, you see. And so, it's a difficult thing, and I appreciate that these are difficult decisions, they're not easy decisions for council to make. It's a valid point that these are high-risk, very low-frequency events. But to councillor's point, I believe that the understanding from our rate pairs is an expectation of a level of service. If I live on Long Voisine Road, I operate the ferry terminal, or live on an island, I hope that there's a plan in place, should something not go so well on a particular day. And ultimately, those are questions that we need to be answered. Can I just follow this up with something? Mr. Wilson, to your point, I'm not very well-versed in emergency management, because that's, that's not my field of expertise. But is it possible to actually take 20 firefighters, let's say, and just concentrate them, well, let's say, this is our, these are going to be our guys? If I just throw out an idea, or it could be 30, at least we don't expect the training of every single firefighter. We would have an elite group that we could actually be able to train and respond, ask to respond. Well, just to answer that question, councillor, we only train our Rockland firefighters today because they're the ones that are going to launch the boat. You see, yes, the boat is stored in Rockland. It's not, we would be training at that point in time. I believe that a big station specifically, it's, Station 2 is to back up Station 3, yes. Clarence Creek and Burget, you know, I mean, we, Draft and other bodies of water, they can respond to, well, my understanding is that these firefighters will not be called upon, most likely not to obtain boat training, because they won't make use of boat facilities to perform water rescues. Just to recap, I'm saying that I agree that we should be offering a certain level of service for water and ice rescue, and some training, whatever. The only thing that I don't agree with is that I don't think that we should be purchasing a new water craft that will be sitting there, as my colleague said, and only be used two or three times a year, and we should look at other options. Well, first of all, the equipment that we have now, is, is it still operational? Well, the report says. I know, I read the report. I read the report, that's fine, then. But we've used it before. Is that what you're saying, it's an obsolete piece of equipment? I believe that this craft has been patched up a couple of times. Well, I guess, if I may, Mr. Mayor, our boat was donated to the department some time ago. It was never intended for that kind of purpose. It was used for that purpose, however, and I believe that firefighters have been responding in that boat. Challenges are that we have a significant amount of waterfront that we need to cover, and to try to cover that from land is very, very difficult. A lot of that stuff is better accessed from the water, and you need something to get there. That's part of the reason why there's a suggestion for a boat. There's a need for training firefighters. If you need to ask them to operate a boat, they need to be trained to operate a boat. If we don't know whose boat we're going to have and how to have access to that boat, then that's a challenge. I appreciate there's a cost attached to that, but the RDC or the inflatable craft that we use today has something in the neighborhood of 14 patches on it, and we need a decision from council in terms of if we are going to continue with that program. I would suggest that we look at replacing this piece of equipment, because that piece of equipment is a little bit long in the tooth. We could still use it for training. Again, it would not be your primary rescue vehicle, but at one point in time, it's going to be beyond repair. I think that the point that you're making is that, well, you know, we have the ferry, if there, there's a maximum of six cars on that ferry, and if something happens, we need service for that. I'm sorry? During the summertime, but it doesn't run during the wintertime? Okay, well, that's fine, that's fine. Fine, but, all right. We're not talking about the vessel ferry, but Rockland ferry. 2018, Mr. Mayor, we're, well, if we start with a rapid deployment craft, that would be a start, because you have a long list, don't you, this year, Mr. Wilson? There might be some items that Santa Claus will not bring you. Can we enter into a partnership with the OPP? Or is that beyond possible? Do you know how long that process takes? Ferry and Clarence Point might have a lot of time to sink before we get any feedback from the OPP in a timely fashion. Mr. Keigho.
Mr. Mayor, we might coordinate, even if we coordinate with other municipalities, our municipality would pay 100%, even if we enter into an agreement with the OPP. So in other words, there's no point. That's right. Because that's a, that's contingent with our agreement with the OPP, so we'd have to pay 100%. Or we might bring it to the United Counties of Prescott Russell, they might consider buying a boat. Well, we might bring it to the United Counties of Prescott Russell's attention, because they're offering dispatch services, it would only cost us than 27%.
Councillor Grimal. Maybe we can ask Mr. Wilson and his department to take a look at this option? If we could have a range, you know, if we could replace the whole boat, that would be fine. It's actually very small for purposes, for general purposes. Well, really, we should look at the rapid deployment one. If there are 14 patches on it, on the existing boat. Yeah, but the rapid deployment, I mean, I'll let you talk about it. Well, Mr. Mayor, the rapid deployment craft is long in the tooth, and the costs are, I know it's not a boat. I mean, again, we've worked with that boat for a number of years to address the councillor's point. It is still functioning. It's not an ideal boat. And I think that if we are asking firefighters to respond in that boat, given certain conditions, it might be an unnerving situation. But to your point, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate that you have a list of things coming from us this year. All I need is a direction from council as to the level of service you'd like us to provide, and as far as what you'd like us to see in our budget submission for the next year. I would ask, Mr. Mayor, that you bring it to the county's attention and see what you can do. I'll try. I doubt very much we'll get action at the county level on this, but we'll try. Let's get a letter done and send it to the counties, then. We have trouble getting an answer from them with regards to ambulance services, so, yes. Once we get a direction as to what services you want, and we'll put together boat services options, and we'll go to county to see where we can, how far we can go along in that road. But we can't approve any funds for the boat until we adopt the 2018 budget. Now, the fire service master plan, well, reports will be brought back for all, 47 recommendations contained in that plan. They'll be forwarded to you right up until budget time, because to deliberate on all of those in one fell swoop on budget day would be way too much. So if you're able to give direction tonight, then we could work on options. Well, I think that everybody is in favor of keeping at least a current level of service available. Well, if people want this, you have no other choice but to purchase a new boat in 2018. It's not just a matter of saying, well, we'll take a look at what's going to happen with our 2018 budget. If you decide to go ahead with the level of service there, well, I mean, you can't, you can't do this. You'll have, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor. You will have to wait upon budget time. You see, I believe that the level of service is one decision to be taken, and what needs to be purchased is another decision. So if you can purchase a boat that might have a 10-year instead of a 15-year lifespan, that would be something. First decision, do we want to maintain the same level of service? Secondly, we can look at the budgetary constraints. Tonight, Mr. Wilson, needs direction so that he can submit his budgetary report. Well, the question to be debated tonight is, do we continue the same level of service? I would move that this service be divided into two parts, Mr. Mayor. During the summertime, summer, well, water rescue or ice rescue? And we could say, well, we can, might invest a bit more for water rescue, and next year, a bit more for ice rescue. You could break that down in twos, we could have, afford us a bit more flexibility with regards to where our money might go to, in keeping with the priorities we might set down. So, Mr. Wilson? Well, Mr. Mayor, we're offering the status quo, then, the level of service that we offer today? The viability of offering services for ice-water rescue for someone being caught in the middle of the river during the winter would be next to nothing. To try to get out there, our response time was not likely to result in anything except from, for putting people in a huge amount of risks, let's say, firefighters. Let's say, we could say, during the summertime, if, you know, something happens with that ferry, well, we could, we wouldn't put people in the water, we'd put people in the boat to make a rescue. If it's in the bear on a pond or something, somewhere like that, we could be able to put people into water in a non-moving water environment to try to manage that risk level. That's supported by public safety guidelines that talk about a myriad level of services, depending on the bodies of water, that, I think that's a valid solution. But to my knowledge, I believe that council has never had that discussion in terms of what level of service we want to provide in this area, and do we really need this to be included in our new bylaws? So your recommendation here is that you're not going to do much on ice, but you want more for water. Well, if you have an ice fishing hut in the bay, there's no moving water there, and if someone gets into trouble, we'll send somebody onto the ice to help that person. But if you wind up on an ice floe drifting down the Ottawa River, it's a, it's a land-based rescue that's called upon to effect a ice rescue. Well, Jean-Marc LaLonde states that that's an OPP responsibility. If someone calls 911 and states there's an emergency on the water, on a body of water between two provinces, Ontario and Quebec, it seems to me that who would be deployed? Would it be Clarence, local fire department, or the OPP? You know, well, I don't think the public will care who it is. They want, what I'm saying is this, though, I understand, I understand. But I understand that. But by the time you get a boat in the water in Rockland, based on where it is now, I mean, the river will almost have time to freeze. You know, we're looking at helping in emergency situations, I agree, but, in any event, back to Mr. Keigho's point, any way you look at it, our taxpayers will pay for this, because they're just going to bill us if we resort to OPP services. We have, we don't have a contract, but we have an agreement with the OPP to provide services. It's $2.4 million annually. Oh, you want a boat? Tag that on. Anyway, you look at it, our taxpayers are going to pay for that service 100%. And, and I don't know, like, I understand the responsibility of the OPP, because in Ottawa, Ottawa Fire goes out, and Gatineau, Gatineau Fire goes out, not the OPP. They have a boat. Ottawa Police have a boat. The OPP are not there. But, but, because it's Ottawa Police, maybe that's why, it's Ottawa Police. Well, the public safety guidelines, both of the provinces and ministries, states that the delivery of ice rescue is not the responsibility of the fire department unless that service is clearly defined and approved by council in a bylaw, and it says where rescue services may be a component of local fire protection. You see, it's an option, there's no requirement to do it, but it depends on a multitude of things. And they talk about some of the considerations. Do you have risk for recreational users? Maybe consider this in tourism areas? Do you have firefighters working near bodies of water? Do you have areas near municipalities that are surrounded by waters that have undue risk? Some of those things are to be taken into consideration, that would fall into that category. We do have a body of water that we do face risk at, but Ms. Collier's point is a very valid point. We're going to pay for that service, one way or the other. The timeline to put a boat in the water will be quicker, even with volunteer firefighters, than getting two neighbors that might be in the Rockland detachment. They, together, they won't be able to muster a craft in time, even if it was at the Rockland detachment, to respond aptly, what needs. Well, I believe that what we have before us clearly expresses our needs. All those in favor? Councillor Grimal wanted to separate those into. I move if we, if we are to offer the same level of service, and then we ask individual departments to submit to us a detailed report of costs of rescue services in regular water and ice-water rescue. Not in, so, what we do is that we take care of water rescue, and then next year, we could take care of ice rescue, from a budgetary standpoint. One section would be for water rescue, and then the other section would be with regard to ice rescue. Two resolutions? No, one resolution, one resolution, with sub-A and B. You have A, B, C, and D already under that particular resolution. Resolution for water services and a resolution for ice services. Safety on calm water, I mean. So we, and, and ice. So you might combine two resolutions, or come up with two separate resolutions, or one resolution? No, the report be handed to us separately, along with associated costs, to allow us to vote on those. Well, I'm completely lost here. Can we have, like, in our resolution, could we have ice, instead of ice and water, have two resolutions? One for water or ice? Or do you want both of them in the same resolution? One is A and second one is B? One A for water and the B for ice? Well, I don't know that it matters, Mr. Mayor. It's just that we're separating the costs, you see. That way you can identify the costs of ice and decide which one you want to go with first. Well, we can amend, amend either one at the time of the resolution. No Well, we can amend, amend either one at the time of the resolution. No problem then. We could vote on this one, Mr. Mayor, and we can say yes for one and no for the other. I'd just like us to have an option for a new vessel. If you're looking, if we're looking at the $45,000, we could look around. I'm not saying that we can purchase a used boat, but sometimes you can look around. Well, why don't you just tack on and say, and whereas, we mandate him to give us different options? And that way, you're just amending this one. So we'll vote on this one as is. All right. Well, this resolution states that the level of service will be the same given the amendments that are proposed. Well, why don't write in an amendment instead of separating things? I think we can keep everything together, but tack upon Mr. Wilson the responsibility to bring us a detailed amount with regards to water rescue. Mr. Wilson will visit that resolution. All those in favor then? Is there anything else to modify, to change with regard to this? Fine, fine. Let's go on to item 9.5, award of a contract for the installation of municipal signs. Councilor Levaire, Committee of the Hall recommends the town council that it adopt a resolution that will allow the mayor and clerk to enter into a signed agreement to proceed to the installation of municipal signs for an amount of $142,665 excluding GSD, and that the section B of the contract of a value of $110,100 be granted conditional upon the award of an amount of money stemming from capital budget expenditures for 2018. Are we, how many signs are we talking about here? Well, for part A, we're talking about five signs. Part B involves 24 signs. Of that total, five are to be relocated. And there are others located at the very extremity of the urban zones, and others are to be added on to pre-existing signs. It states one sign to be added on to Enesem-Gibar, two new signs at Clarence Point, and two new signs at Clarence Creek. Those are new signs. And there are also five that will be relocated. So all in all, are we talking about those new signs that will be, the old signs will be taken out and the new signs will be put up and relocated? I thought that $142,000 amount was quite high. What's this $32,025 subamount? Well, you see, what happens is that two individuals tendered. One of those two was disqualified. So what we're asking you to do is this, is to approve contract A, which is valued at $42,230, which falls within the parameters of the budget that we set aside for this purpose. And part B would be to deal with the same supplier, Louis Saez, to enter into a conditional contract upon the approval of the 2018 budget. It would avoid us to go back to tender again. Does anyone have part, parts A and B before them? Well, I believe the way in which the motion is drafted might lead you to think that we're only talking about one amount here. Okay, so what you're saying is that we break this amount down? So what you're saying is that you're approving a contract along with Mr. Louis Saez for an amount of $142,000. But the $110,000 is conditional upon the approval of the 2018 budget. So you would approve this year an amount of $42,000. Now, on a sign-per-sign basis, on a sign-by-sign basis, how much would it amount to? $142,000 divided by 30. Let me just tabulate. Well, how many signs all in all? Twenty-two? Well, 24 plus 7, 31. Divided by $142,800, or 31 signs divided by, divided into $142,800. That's why I'm asking this question. I don't have this amount. As in best drafted, has this been resolution, only been drafted in English? Well, it's in the report. It's not in the report that I have before me. It states the following: Be it also resolved that section B of this self-same contract of a value of $110,000. Yeah, but you're talking about a part B, but you're never alluding to a part A, however. The committee recommends the town council that it enter into an agreement of $142,000. But it doesn't allude specifically to a part A, but only to a part B with a given dollar amount to part B. You need to have it precisely detailed. Well, it has been set down or written out on page three. Well, it's not in the resolution, but it's, it's contained within the document, however. Well, you can modify the resolution and maybe put down the number of signs. I can't make out the number of signs involved. Well, part A deals five signs, and the heritage part, I see, I see. Yes, that's right. Section B alludes to 24 new signs. Five new signs deals with section A. I know, but the new resolution deals with B and not A in particular. These are the signs that are going to be put up, those wooden signs? The one we have a draft of? Seems quite, quite expensive, $142,000. Yes, but all the work entailed involved in this is, for installation, is also quite costly. We only had one tenderer also. Well, he doesn't take into account his profit, the work he does, the digging he does, and the installation he takes care of. Well, do you want to enter into the installation of signs? No, I have enough on my plate, thank you. So there's also the $42,000. $42,000 was earmarked for the design of the signs and the installation of these said signs. Now, what we're asking, once this is done, and because we only, we're only dealing with one supplier, and we're already, we already entered into the process, and we've approved him, if the 2018 budget is accepted, we've approved him as being the supplier. Well, could we not go back to tender then? Can we do this once we've entered into an agreement with him? Definitely. But I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. You'll remember, we were both together, we were overseeing truck bids. And we asked companies to tender for the purchase of a truck that we wish to make, but they needed to be affiliated with MERS, the M-E-R-S Association. Someone, well, Mr. Mayor, I believe that if we do change companies, we'd have to make sure that signs have the same look. And if we go back to tender once again, and if one of the two companies has been disqualified, possibly we'll come up with the same two companies involved. And probably in a year from now, prices will have increased, increased. If we're not happy with this cost, then we can say, well, we won't deal with this particular company. But at this point in time, we only, we're dealing with one company that's located in our municipality. Now, I don't know if a company would have undercut that one that, I believe, but, I believe we should deal with this one. And, well, I, I believe that the $52,000 for seven signs, given the design and the installation of the $42,000, well, $120,000 for 20, 24? Well, we're talking about $50,000. Look, they've submitted $34,000 just for design, for the design, and $110,000 for 24. Look, I believe it's cheaper to start off with. Are those signs the same size? Well, there was a contingency part added on to part two. In essence, we're dealing with the same price, we're within $100 and some odd dollar difference. I believe a local company tendered, that company passed the test, we should go along with them. Tonight, we're voting for the seven signs, and we can modify this. We're still within the budget parameters for this year. Councilor Lallon, is this the type of signs that are going to be put up here, there, and everywhere? Yes. Well, what I don't like about this design. And I take a look at other municipalities. When you enter into Embraam, it states, well, Embraam, Russell Township, Alfred, Alfred Plantage and its township. And now I get into Rockland. It says Clarence, Rockland, or, it seems to me, you know, if, 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 we, yes, we'd ask that sectors like St. Pascal was, that Burjet be written down. If we enter into St. Pascal, it should be, what should be written out is St. Pascal, municipality of Clarence and Rockland. Well, if we put this everywhere, we'll lose out on our individual villages' names. Well, we were going to say, what we said, that we were going to put up those signs, and underneath those signs, what would be included would be Clarence Creek. Well, I believe that in Rockland, under that, we could put down Clarence, Rockland. Look, when you go to Orleans, Orleans is, she's, you're shouting in my ear there, sorry. Mr., can we enter into talks with the company to try and modify the wording that will appear on the signs? I don't think it would modify their costs. No. I believe that we, that he'd sent us a design. I believe, I thought we'd approved that design, and, well, that's fine, that's fine. So save an apart, except for that change, everyone's in favor? Yes. So you'll look into this and come back to us on this? Yes. Let's go on now to 9.6, requests submitted by the East Ontario Catholic School Board. Be resolved to enter into discussions with regard to the administration of the East Ontario Catholic School Board to establish partnership with the said school board to increase sports installations within our community as recommended. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Yes. All those in favor? Carrie then, thank you. Item 9.7, sanitary sewage treatment plant and main pumping station upgrades. Council of Billing, be it resolved that Committee of the Hall recommend, that council approves the work and the process to modify the budget for the. That's not the resolution. You're not reading that particular, we're into 9.7. Be it resolved at an amount of $5 million. It starts off with this. Let me start off from the very beginning. Be it resolved that an amount of $5 million be set aside for sanitary sewage treatment plant and main pumping station upgrades. And be resolved that initial construction, subject to modifications, be resolved, Committee of the Hall, and the town council approve the new revised calendar of works and amounts set aside for the sanitary sewage treatment plant and main pumping station upgrades, that it approves these amounts. So that's within your department as it's seconded by? Councilor Lallon, Andre. Any questions? Councilor Lallon.
I was taking a look at this here, Mr. Mayor. Given the budget that we have before us with regard to the work in progress, our budget was set down, well, was pegged at $4,975,347. There's an increase of 92.11%. If I rely on the amounts appearing in this report, there's an increase of 116% as opposed to the cost that had been initially looked at, and that's quite a difference. We're talking about $4,337,000 and jumped to $9,536, an increase of $5,239,000. Well, let me give you a bit, brief overview as to what happened in the past with regard to this. In 2014, when we drafted this initial budget, it was based upon a previous study that had been commissioned prior to a draft plan being put forward. So that dealt with the $5 million. Now, following this, we performed a geotechnical investigation, and we identified that there was, that there were unstable soils in that area, and we needed to modify the design. So they came up with a $2 million increase just for that particular part from the, of about $2.1 million increase from the $5 million initial amount. And we then came up with a preliminary study, and we revised the budget also. And we had occasion also to identify, within the $5 million, we had a contingency fee of 3%. For a project of that particular scope, it's quite small and sometimes quite risky. Usually should have a contingency amount in the pegged at around 20%. So what we did is that we adjusted the contingency amount that accounted for another $2 million. Now, this being said, on this $9 million, there's the equalization rate. This part is not an increase to the $5 million. In fact, what happened if we would have come up with a plan stating that we'd identified in 2018 $2.8 million for the equalization factor? Because we did not have that. It was identified in the administrative part, but it was not feasible to present it to council at that time. What this means is that we had $2.8 million that should have been taken care of in 2018. But we're in 2017, and makes sense to take care of both of those at the same time. So it's a $2.8 million additional. That's the reason behind those costs. So if everything goes well, if we don't have all that much contingency fees to take care of, we could subtract amount from that amount. So that's why we're going from $175,000 worth of contingency fees to $2.3 million. That's right. And that's in line also with a report that Mr. Darsh had forward with regard to how we would go about tackling contingency fees. His report had identified that a project, a high-risk project such as this one should have a contingency fee that would hover around the 20% mark. So I believe if we're still left with $1.5 million, that would be taken off from the amount. And also, we made grant, an OCIF grant funding request for $1.147 million. If we have that grant, if we obtain this grant, this will also decrease the amount. And we've, we'll also seek to apply to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and there's a potential $1 million that we could also obtain. We're in the process of drafting an application with regard to that. If I recall, we'd been accepted for that, but there was no money left. Did we not accept, did, did we not get accepted once before, but they ran out of cash? I believe that we met with Chirrelli with that, and he seemed quite interested with that. You know, when we met with this guy for that grant? Well, Mr. Chirrelli is certainly interested in the environmental impact and the health and safety aspects. There were also some development charges, right, that were worked into with that? Yes. Councilor Zant, what's the percentage of development charges going towards something like this?
Well, we are currently, now that we've added the digester section, we're looking at what the percentage is going to be. And I think we're in the order of 50%. 50, yes, 5-0. Well, maybe we could, I know there's new money added when we're entering a new fiscal year because we're requesting for money all the time. We could wait for new. We could wait for new fiscal year, our new fiscal year, and go back and try again for additional subsidies to be able to obtain money. Well, we've applied for grant already with the OCIF, and with these grant programs, it's very important to get in before the shovel gets into the ground, if you know, if you get my grift, drift, you, so, yes, that's right. And coffers, the federal and provincial coffers get replenished with cash after a certain time of the year, so. But we're shovel-ready now, are we? Yes, we are shovel-ready now, however, we have to bear this in mind. Councilor Lalande.
I'd mentioned, there was 116 percent worth of increase, but it's 151.72 percent worth of increases when we're dealing with contingency fees. Contingency fees from 161,000 to $2,370,000. But I recall that when we put in mechanical equipment at the plant, I'd warned council not to go forward with that, I did not sit at the council table at that time. But three months later, news was made public that we'd lost 60 percent worth of grants that would have been applicable to that amount. Now, at present, there's a program that's, that needs to be tapped in. Ballard needs to be contacted, not Chirelli. But there was one involving Bob Chirelli, he's only, he only deals with infrastructure, yet we applied under the infrastructure program for this. Well, you have to tap into Ballard's source, Ballard's, well, take a look at the CIF, we can only obtain $1 million instead of obtaining potentially $6 million. We'll take a look at all potential source funding. We're still talking about Rockland money here, taxpayers' money. We'll look into this, Councilor Lalande. Well, we have to obtain information as to other programs. If you need information, sir, just call Mr. Lalande, he'll promptly inform you as to who to call and what doors to knock at. Sir, by going ahead with this plan, we're correcting the existing discrepancies with regard to the existing program. It's a matter of repairing what we have now. Is that going to help us with our growth potential in the future? Well, what it does, in fact, it will help us, well, you see, our pumping stations are directly linked to the water treatment plant. So, if we have flooding events or frequent heavy storms, there's a propensity then during those times to increase the workload on those particular structures. So, the equalization tank will be built to stabilize things. Well, in your department, I believe that you're, you've got about 3,000 residential units waiting for green lighting, and they're at the planning stage, and we're waiting to develop an industrial, industrial area. Are we going to have a further request for $12 million to add on to the existing water plant facilities right now? How far can we go with the water treatment plant that we have right now, the pumping station facilities we have right now? Maybe you can come back to us right now with facts and figures. I believe you could come back with further information as to how many more houses could be connected to our existing system at present. I believe we were talking about 11,000 to 12,000 residences as being a maximum. Well, don't forget that there's an odor emanating from that area, but the grill work will correct that difficulty. I'm sorry, Mr. Levan, go ahead. Who is the author of this? Was it Mr. Leonard or Mr. Lombardi? Well, who prepared the original, who drafted the original $5 million budget? Well, I believe that was drafted in 2013, 2014, because the department was working from data stemming from five different reports. It states additionally projected, additional projected construction costs did not include such expenditures such as bonding insurance, mobilization, contract or markup, et cetera. These costs have now been included. This is implying that whoever prepared the original estimate was a fool, it says, they didn't take into account contract contingencies, they only wanted to make money, they didn't even include insurance. That's what this paragraph is saying. Well, we're here now, we're here now. Well, what gives us evidence that this new budget takes this into account? Because that particular budget was way off the mark at that time, 2013, 2014. And the excuses given was that the contractor forgot to include contingency funds, Mrs. Collier. There are significant adjustment to the budgets, contingency and the addition of the digester. In full review with the engineers that were hired, that's when some of the items that were identified that were missing from the identify, from the original budget. So, those other items were not the major reason for the budget discrepancy. The budget has been reviewed by the engineering firm, and the estimate has been put forward. As the report said, when they decide to, when they got into the study, they found that the condition of the soil was not good. It was an addition then to the whole cost. It's something that happened, you know? Now, now, we're at this point, we have to deal with it, our people have checked it out, the engineers have studied it, there's the report. We can do like others and just sit on it, or we can go ahead and get it done. We have to get it done, because our residents are complaining. As you saw in our report, the ministry can come in and say, you're not doing anything. You've got to do it. We might as well prepare it this way, obtain some grants for it, get paid for it by the development charges, and go ahead with it. We have to solve the problem, that's why we're here. Just a question here, who prepared this report? Sir, Mr. Lalande, a vote was requested before we go any further. Who's in favor? Who's in favor? We're voting on the sanitary sewage treatment plant and main pumping station upgrades, as well as the implementation of the contents of the report. All those in favor then? Fine? Well, before we go any further, there was an engineering firm that worked alongside us to come up with the final results. Who's, Harley Anderson? Well, the first report was drafted by Anderson, R.B. Anderson would be the assessment you approved almost a year and a half ago, half a million dollars for the assessment of the entire requirements of this facility. The one that drafted this budget also? Yes, okay. Approved? Fine then. Other items? It has been adopted, yes. Councilor Zant, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Approximately six months ago, we voted on a new bylaw with regard to garbage pickup. Last week, somebody asked questions with regard to commercial waste pickup. I received a call from the owner of the medical center that wishes to comply with the provisions of this city's bylaw, and to enter into a contract for garbage, commercial garbage pickup, pickup with the city of Clarence and Rockland, so, for recyclables. You know, notwithstanding, you know, those hazardous items stemming from his clinic. In communicating with the city, I was told that the bylaw actually says that the $32 per ton that was set also included the fact that no one knew that they could opt into city services. Well, it was their decision. But we do have exceptions, I'm thinking, of a certain conversation that you and I entered into, the mayor entered into in his office about certain business, businesses that were involved, and that was granted as well. I'm wondering why it is that we have a service for the city, and we're actually telling people, don't come to the city for garbage pickup services, don't knock out our door. Well, in answer to your question, when the bylaw was presented to council, it was very clear that a site plan agreement would, that would be forward, it would not, no longer include garbage pickup, which, now, with regard to that exception that we entered into with the mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, along with the, given the conversation that we entered into with the mayor and yourself, that was granted, but they paid. It was an exception, it was granted, because we were dealing with two businesses on one property, if you recall. In the whole process, those two businesses were on the same property owned by, two businesses owned by the same people, but different pieces of land, and that was corrected. Garbage was being picked up before, though, that's why. But I'm wondering why we say, no, for somebody who wants to get into an agreement? Well, it's under a list of items for review, and this has not yet been finalized. But our bylaw states, yeah, our bylaw says no, correct, and there's no exception. Could we make an exception? An exception could be made to any bylaw, as applied to the parking bylaw. So, can I bring one to the next meeting, at the next meeting, to make an exception to the bylaw with regard to this particular case? Fine. Andre?
I'm addressing your point, Mario. I understand what you're saying, but there's a consequence in acting this, the way you're suggesting we act to, because that means there's going to be additional garbage taken to our dumping site. When you're dealing with a private contractor, the garbage is not trucked to our dumping site. If you're entering into exceptions, we're going to wind up with a shorter life stamp and with regard to our dumping site. Well, I would, I understand what you're saying, but if you have a system that just doesn't work, you have people that just happen to be in when the clock strikes midnight, and it says, well, whoever's in now, you're in, but anything past that, we're going to say no to. We have to have that flexibility, you know, to offer services. It's just that there are consequences involved. If we're offering services, let's offer them, and if we're actually going to plan to phase everything out, let's pick a date and tell everybody, you're out by a certain date. Because we can't play this game of you're in and you're out. Mr. Keough? If you recall the statutes, Mr. Mayor, there were options provided in the report. One of them was comparing ourselves with other areas of the cities, and most of the cities that we've dealt with are out of the commercial side of the business. There are private contractors for many reasons that were cited in the report, different volumes, different issues on the commercial side, and so that option was provided. Council could take that, but the option that council could, did not take was any new people in the commercial side to be taken in and over time could be opting out. Well, over time, I mean, 30 years, how long are we going to taper certain businesses out of this agreement? Well, we had that discussion. We'll enter into this discussion again during the budget. Well, I think that we should phase out until, and phase out, and then everybody's going to get out. It's just like you're entering into a contract. There were provisions, one of the options that was presented that all commercial was out, if you recall, folks, when we eliminated the pickup of grass along the curbs, you remember how much flak we got? And if we say we're going to eliminate every, the whole thing, can you imagine? Well, getting flak right now, because people are complaining that some businesses are getting that service, and they're not. But some deal with private garbage pickup, garbage services. I know, I know. I don't know what, well, Mr. Keough says that we can revise this. Mr. Guirimao, two questions for St. Joseph, the finishing work. I believe that the work on the park, will it be finished this year or next spring? Because there, if you go up St. Joseph, the St. Joseph Hill, there's a big sidewalk on the side that was unfinished, it remains unfinished. But if I continue on southwards, in a southerly direction, there's a whole, there's a huge expanse of gravel there, and it has not yet been finished. Is it included in the contract? Yes, the finishing services have been included in the contract, and I was told that this work needs to be performed, will be performed very soon. However, I could take into, take a look as to the finalized date that we entered into an agreement with. Now, with regard to the Caron Street, part of it in my ward, most of that part was in Misspelling Gets Ward. Was there a reason why the lines were not painted this year? Because the lines are already, are close to disappearing right now. Can you look into that? Because the lines were not painted, and the lines, street lines are nearly invisible now from Caron, on Caron Street. Any other questions? Mr. Leonard, I noticed this year, and I don't like to see this situation, along the sidewalk, grass is high, about a foot, is one foot or along Patricia and St. Jean, even three foot high along the side of the curb there. I remember that when I was traveling around municipalities a few years ago, when I noticed that the grass was not cut and was high, I made individual aware, individual mayors aware of the situation. But now, I've noticed weeds growing, even in Clarence, where grass is allowed to grow higher along the sidewalk, and I don't know why this is this year, since we've had a lot of rainfall this year. Well, why should we not, why would that prevent us from cutting it? Well, there are no, there's no grass along St. Joseph, let me tell you. Yeah, but there's gravel sprouting left and right. Is there something we could like into with regard to this, that students, we could put students to work to cut the grass or the weeds? We could spread down, spread roundup? You need a licensed supplier to purchase this unless you know of a farmer that could supply you this product under the table that has been licensed, but you need to deal with a licensed supplier to spread down the roundup. Mrs. Simont? Mr. Wilson, I received complaint with regard to Ramage Street, to the effect that a lot of cars are parked along that street. Could you go by there a bit more often to ensure there are cars that are parked there that shouldn't be parked there? Could we just go by there little more often and take a look into that? Yes. Any other questions? All right, adjournment? 9:20, Madam Clerk? 9:20 PM, Mr. Mayor.